And then please, everyone remain standing for the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our invocation this morning, and please Pastor make your way up to the podium as Pastor Deifnbach makes his way there. And Pastor Deifnbach is from Little Home Church at By the Wayside in Wayne, Illinois. Before we begin our invocation this morning, I would ask if I may please for a moment of silence. I'd like us to turn our prayers and attention to Bensonville Police Officer Steve Kotluski, who was shot several times while on duty Saturday. While his assailant was charged and is in custody without bail, Officer Kotluski is hospitalized, has underwent surgeries, and we understand more surgeries are planned. We are keeping Officer Kotluski and his family in our thoughts and prayers. Also, our deepest sympathies go out to the families of Jacob Jurenek and Franco Patino, both just 21 years old, from Naperville, young men who died tragically in a crowd surge Friday at a concert in Houston. Our hearts go out to their families, and they too remain in our thoughts and prayers this morning. Pastor Deifnbach.
I am sure there are many faiths represented here today, and so I ask that you pray with me in a way that is most comfortable for you. Wise and loving one, in this season of Thanksgiving, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the holy writings, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our county board, for all the various levels of county officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved DuPage County. Be with this police officer and his family. Be with the families of Naperville of these young men who have lost their lives. Knowing, good God, you are hearing us better than we are speaking, we offer these prayers in all the holy names of God. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Before we take the roll pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order and state law, Member Tornatori will be participating today remotely. His beautiful wife Marcia has undergone surgery, and Sam as the caregiver is certainly within the confines and the intent and the substance of the executive order which would permit him to participate remotely. Seeing no objection, hearing no objection. Okay, so I would ask for an affirmative vote to allow, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Welcome to the meeting Sam.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Thank you all.
Okay, with that, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk Adam Johnson, please call the roll. Chaplin.
Here.
Chavez. Covert.
Here.
Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Here.
Shorzy. Selman. Tornatori.
Here.
And Zane. We have a quorum. Thank you. Let's see, we have a couple of presentations, and I think I'm going to stay here for these presentations if I may please. First and foremost, we have the America Recycles Day proclamation. And I believe this proclamation is located here, so I will make my way down to the podium. Forgive me please. So I'd like to invite Karen Rosmas, President of Keep Illinois Beautiful, and Sheila Rutledge. They can gather at the podium. Yes, and as those two great citizens make their way to the podium, we are all familiar with the slogan Keep America Beautiful. One of the ways we can preserve our environment is by promoting and celebrating recycling in our community. That's just what we are doing today by declaring November 15th, America Recycles Day. For this purpose, we are joined by Karen Rosmas, President of Keep Illinois Beautiful, and our Environmental Committee Chair Sheila Rutledge. I was going to read the proclamation, but I gave it away. So why don't I just go down there? I'm sorry. Good intentions Sheila, to make sure that we were properly distanced. So with that, the proclamation is as follows. Whereas, America Recycles Day is a national promotion to help raise awareness about recycling and buying recycled products. And whereas businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day 2021 and are encouraging their fellow employees and employers, staff, customers, members, citizens, to pledge to do more. And whereas, each year Americans generate more than 292 million tons of municipal solid waste, or more than 4.9 pounds per person per day, according to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Whereas, DuPage County's Solid Waste and Recycling Annual Report found that in 2020, more than 81,000 tons of recyclables were collected through curbside and recycling drop-off programs, which is 33% of the waste stream. And whereas, recycling consumes between 30 and 95% less energy than when making the original product, supporting the county's Cool DuPage goals. And whereas, recycling supports Illinois's economy with 115,000 jobs and an economic impact of $33 billion annually, according to the Illinois EPA. And whereas, participating in America Recycles Day 2021 is one way the county can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste. And whereas, DuPage County recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and supports efforts that will improve our daily lives and bring about a cleaner, safer, and healthier environment, now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby proclaim November 15th, 2021, as America Recycles Day in DuPage County, to support the significant impact recycling has on natural resources, energy consumption, and our economy. I'll entertain a motion. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. There it is, resolved, approved. This is so wonderful. We all believe in recycling, and we're so glad that you lead us in this area. Please, would you be kind enough to share a few thoughts with us?
Hi, I'm Karen Rosmas. Not used to speaking with a mask on, so forgive me. Keep America Beautiful is the umbrella organization with over 600 affiliates throughout the world. And there are three pillars of importance are preventing litter, recycling, and beautification. Keep Illinois Beautiful was formed in 1993, became incorporated, and every Keep America Beautiful affiliate in this state is automatically an affiliate of Keep Illinois Beautiful. We have 14 affiliates. They do marvelous work with very little money, believe me, beautification projects. Two of our affiliates run recycling centers. Many of them partner with garden clubs and chambers of commerce to beautify their community. And of course, behavior change, which is a big part of recycling, is behavior change. It's recognizing and making a good choice for things that go through your hands every day. And one person alone can't do it, but everybody with 81,000 tons.
Yes.
Yeah, that's very well, very good. So thank you for having me here, and thank you for the proclamation and recognizing the importance. It's all those little choices that make a very big difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you Karen for coming this morning. I'm glad that the recycle day is the 15th. That gives us all a little bit of lead time to think of what we can do a little better in our own homes to recycle. I'm going to continue to urge this body to make good choices about our environment first and then costs later. I understand that there is a dynamic between the two, but we are at a crisis moment where we do need to make better choices about what we do as a body to help or hurt our environment. So I appreciate the opportunity to bring this to everybody's attention this morning. Thank you.
So we have a Metro presentation here, and I can't tell you how proud and excited I am to welcome our representative on the Metro Board, Mr. Wes Beckton is here, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to invite Wes to join me up here to present Metro's annual report. He's accompanied by an old friend, Dimitri. And I know, given the challenging situation transit agencies are in, given the pandemic and the recovery effort, we are interested in learning more about how Metro's upcoming budget will impact our residents. So Wes, thanks for joining us, and please, the floor is yours.
Well, it's an honor to be here today. I'm joined by Dimitri Skofis, our Community Relations Representative. And today I'm going to be talking to you about the Metro budget. I'm going to talk to you about the operating budget. I'm going to talk to you about the capital budget. Before I get into some of the numbers, I just want to make it very clear. Metro's mission statement is to provide safe, reliable, efficient, and accessible rail transportation that connects people with their jobs. That's our mission, and that's what we deliver on, the professionals that work at Metro deliver on every day. Obviously, when we talk about the operating budget, the biggest impact on that is ridership. And for the 2022 budget, the projections are made out of estimate of ridership returning to somewhere between 25 and 35% of pre-pandemic levels. That works out to be a total revenue projection of $900 million. The revenue is made up of three parts. One part is the fair revenue. The other part, as you're aware, is from the regional transportation sales tax, and then the rest of it comes from federal COVID relief funding. It's important to note, there is no fair increase planned for 2022. Let me say that again, no fair increase planned for 2022. This is important because although we are restoring service to some of the pre-pandemic levels, we don't want to do that on the backs of the people that are utilizing the Metro system. So the operating budget, again, $900 million. Capital budget, $263 million. That is going to cover a bunch of things that have to do with rail upgrades, track upgrades, bridge upgrades, facility upgrades, signal upgrades, and also some support activities. Again, these are all fully funded. Some of the projects that impact DuPage County, Hinsdale Highlands, Metro contributed to a village project to rehab the exterior depot and repairs to outbound, the outbound shelter. West Hinsale Design will begin to replace the inbound shelter. Clarendon Hills, that was a village-led project to construct a new depot, shelters, covered bicycle shelter. It will be completed later this year. Metro contributed $3.75 million to this project. Westmont, we've got a design of new platforms and other station improvements. Elmhurst is a city-led project currently, which is in the design phase to look at platforms and a pedestrian tunnel. Metro is contributing to funding this project. Glen Ellen, it's a village-led project to construct a new depot, platforms, and other pedestrian tunnel. Metro is contributing funding to this project, along with West Chicago, where we're designing a platform, stairs that will meet ADA requirements. So obviously, there are quite a few, no pun intended, but moving parts going on here. We've got some negotiations with several labor unions. We have negotiations with the union-specific entity on what's going to happen with those rail lines. But I want to go back to where I started with our mission statement of providing safe, reliable, efficient, accessible transportation, rail transportation that connects people to their jobs. That concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you Wes. Questions? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Beckton about Metro? Yes, Member Renahan.
Hi there. Thanks for coming out today.
Thank you.
I just had a question about service. You said service working on being restored. What percentage kind of rate are we at now versus where we were, say, pre-pandemic?
Yeah, I'm going to punt that question a little bit because I want to give an answer that I believe is over 90%.
80% restored? No, we're 80% of what we were?
80% of pre-COVID.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great question.
We've lost 80%.
I'm sorry?
We've lost 80% of our ridership, is that what you're saying?
So, well, we're talking about two different things. Part of this is ridership. I believe your question was about service. Is that, just want to check in to make sure I'm accurate. Restoring service. And I believe that number is we're back to somewhere over 90% of where service was pre-pandemic levels. And I'll get you the exact number. We'll send that back out to the board. Ridership continues to be the challenge though. Ridership is at between 25 and 35% of pre-pandemic levels. So this is where the management piece comes in, and our team of professionals is doing a great job managing that complex rubric. Because you want to have the service so people can come back, but you need the ridership in order to fund that. And so if you've got friends, relative colleagues that go into the city, tell them to take the train. It's safe, reliable, and accessible.
Further questions? Member Covert, followed by Member DiCiani.
Are there any sanitation policies on the Metro commuter trains? Where I know I have acquaintances and friends and constituents asking about that all the time. They feel like they're not safe on the Metro commuter train because it's not sanitized every time people sit there. Are there any sanitization wipes or sprays that are available on the trains where people could self-sanitize?
Great question, and I would love to have the opportunity to talk to your friend because that's one of those urban myths that's out there. Trains are sanitized daily. They are cleaned between trips. The exact number of turnovers and how those happen, I can get you that information. But we've hired additional staff to make sure that those trains are clean. And I hate to say this, but if your friend sees this, call me. Send me an email. I'd love to have that conversation because if people don't view them as being safe, clean, then that's going to impact the ridership, which we all need to come up to those 25, 35% levels, even higher.
Member DiCiani.
Wes, welcome, and it's great to see you representing us on the Metro Board. We've got a lot going on at Elmhurst. We've got a new station and design. Do we have any timelines on when that might be starting to break around and start to finish here, but do we have any idea what we're looking at yet?
Yeah, I'm going to reuse the phrase unfortunately. You can't see me smiling, but there's some ongoing complex negotiations with union-specific, and it'd be inappropriate to disclose sort of what the strategies are, but there is some posturing going on. So the short answer to your question is, yes, there are plans. No, there is no timeline because there's some other things that happen, and again, lots of moving parts.
Member Chaplin.
Wes, thanks. It's nice that you're here. We got a chance to meet in the Chairman's office a little bit before. But I just wanted to commend Metro for their commitment to safety. Even during COVID, you guys have not cut the budget for safety. There's an organization, DuPage Railroad Safety Council, that was commissioned by the then DuPage County Board Chairman about 25 years ago. That mission is to promote railroad safety throughout the county. So we have a Metro representative that attends all of our meetings. And it's just great to see you participating with our community locally to make sure that people and trains are safe along, you know, over line of the railways. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you for the comment. Further questions? Was there anyone else seeking recognition? Okay, well, thank you very much Wes.
Thank you Chairman.
Appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay, well, on the order of Chairman's remarks, we have a rather lengthy agenda today, and we do have executive session, so I'll try to be brief here. I would like to acknowledge some really good information that came out of our DuPage County Health Department last week. I'm sure you all saw that the DuPage County Health Department is reporting that we have now reached our goal of fully vaccinating 80% of DuPage County residents, the eligible population, which includes the over 12 crowd of folks. This comes just in time as last week, the CDC approved use of Pfizer vaccine in children ages five to 11. The DuPage Health Department is offering the vaccination in its clinics, pediatricians, and we have a robust network of healthcare providers will ensure broad access to the vaccine for children. Because of this shift in focus to vaccinating the younger population, the DuPage County Health Department Community Vaccination Clinic at the DuPage County Fairgrounds is going to close on November 22nd. So anyone who needs help finding a vaccination or has questions should contact their pediatrician. As they say, we have a very robust network of private providers. Or of course, call the DuPage County Health Department, or more effectively, don't call, but get online. You can call if you have to, and that's fine. There's people there to answer the phone, but the most efficient way is to look for them on the internet, dupagehealth.org. So those are my remarks. We can move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. Yes, wow. I know that there are no public comment electronically today, and so as much as we love public comment, we do not have any to present today. So we move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zane. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman. And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of County Board. Member Ashley Selman, and I believe that first item, I would ask that you withdraw that if I may. No? What do you do? Okay, all right, it's up to Mr. Zane and the sponsor, the Chair of the committee. Member Ashley Selman, please proceed.
Okay, I move on CBR 505-21, resolution appointment of Daniel F. Hamlin as the Ethics Advisor of DuPage County.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll? Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zane. Chaplin.
No.
Chavez. Covert.
Aye.
Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
No.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
No.
Shorzy. And Chavez.
No.
Eight. Eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's eight and eight. My goodness, what do we do now? Well, I guess I'll have to do my civic duty, and I cast an aye vote for Mr. Hamlin. So there are nine voting yes, eight voting no. Thank you very much. The resolution is adopted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 508-21, resolution appointment of Paul Hinterlong to the Windstorm Water Management Planning Committee, County Board District 5.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zane. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia. Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. And Shorzy. Okay, the resolution is adopted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief note about this next item. This is sort of just our standard schedule that we pass. There's still discussions to amend our schedule, both based on the Rules Committee conversations and just feedback from the Board. That currently sits with department heads, so we're making sure we're not causing any problems by making adjustments. So you'll notice this is our standard schedule, but we will bring it back with some amendments to address the needs of the Board.
Yes, that sounds good. We discussed it, and I understand. So I think we're all sort of flexible and want to come up with the best schedule that we can to serve the community. Member Desart.
I have already written it in pen in my 2022 calendar.
You've already bought your calendar?
Written the dates in pen, just so you know. I'm not flexible.
Do you put reinforcements on your loose leaf too? Okay, so with that understanding, further questions, discussion? Member Selman is proposing that we adopt the 2022 County Board Meeting Schedule with the understanding that will be some revisions in the future. Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry, I didn't move. I have to move.
Yes, I was waiting for you to move.
It's okay. CBR 509-21, a resolution for the 2022 County Board Meeting Schedule.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Selman. On to the order of Finance, Member Chaplin.
Good morning and thank you Chairman. Just a quick update. We had a really great special call meeting a couple weeks ago, two-hour marathon meeting, but we got a lot of the ARPA money allocated. So I'm really appreciative to all the Board members that stayed and participated because it was really important work that needs to be done. So that's it. But with that, I move on FIR 0501-21, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the comprehensive law enforcement response to drugs grant for $150,000.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DiCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman. Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zane. Okay, thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on FIR 0502-21, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the HUD 2020 Continuum of Care Housing Grant, $196,112.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on FIR 0492-21, resolution authorization to transfer funds from the General Fund to Stormwater Management Fund for fiscal year 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move on FIR 0513-21, resolution additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund for fiscal year 2021.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR oh five one one twenty-one, resolution placing names on payroll.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIR oh five one two two-one, resolution budget transfers eleven-nine twenty-twenty-one to various companies and accounting units.
Sure. Leave is granted.
Move on FIP oh four two one twenty-one, approval of a contract to Verberti Operation Company to furnish and deliver copy and bound paper for office supplies for all DuPage County, uh, departments for the period of December one, twenty-twenty-one to November thirty, twenty-twenty-two, for two hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIP oh four two two two-one, recommendation for the issuance of contract purchase order to Mizro Insurance Services, Inc., to secure cyber liability insurance for the county. Uh, this contract covers the period of December one, twenty-twenty-one to December one, twenty-twenty-two, for finance tort liability, uh, the amount not to exceed two hundred seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move on FIP oh four two three two-one, recommendation for the approval of a contract or, uh, contract purchase order to Mizro Insurance Services, Inc., to provide property insurance for all county properties, including the Health Department. This contract does, contract also covers flood coverage insurance. This contract covers the period of December first, twenty-twenty-one to December first, twenty-twenty-two, for finance contract total amount not to exceed two hundred eighty thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. I move on FIP oh four two four two-one, recommendation for the contract purchase order of Mizro Insurance, uh, Services, Inc., to provide employment practice liability insurance to finance tort liability. Uh, this contract covers the period of December first, twenty-twenty-one to December first, twenty-twenty-two, for a contract amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin?
Thank you. And finally, I move on FIP oh four five, oh four two five two-one, recommendation for the contract purchase order to Mizro Insurance Services to provide workman's compensation insurance to the county and the Health Department. This contract covers the period of December first, twenty-twenty-one to December first, twenty-twenty-second, or December first, twenty-twenty-two, for finance tort liability. Uh, the contract is not to exceed a hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin. On to the order of Development. Mr. Sam Tornatori?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Uh, I move, uh, approval of DCR five oh four dash twenty-one, a resolution to approve the Route eighty-three corridor land use plan update in the DuPage County Land Use Plan Development.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? And Selman? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO one oh seven dash twenty-one, ordinance Z twenty-one seventy-seven, Christensen, to approve a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to reduce a corner lot width from a required one-hundred feet to approximately eighty-three point one six feet.
Leave is granted. Member Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO one oh eight dash twenty-one, ordinance Z twenty-one eighty-three, Hernandez, to approve a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the rear yard setback.
Leave is granted. Member Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve DCO one oh nine dash twenty-one, ordinance Z twenty-one eighty-four, Adushu. This is a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to deny a variation to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the rear property line. If we determine that we want to overturn the zoning hearing officer and the, uh, Development Committee's recommendation, there would be an "I" vote. If you want to sustain both of those votes, you would vote "No."
Very good. With that understanding, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, or is there a uniformity on this? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Tornatori?
No.
Zay?
No.
Chaplin? Chavez?
No.
Covert?
No.
Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
No.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
No.
Schworzy? And Selman? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. On to the order of Environmental. Member Sheila Rutledge.
Microphone works better that way. Thank you, Chairman. Um, this morning, I'll ask for a motion on ENP oh four two oh dash two-one, a recommendation for the approval of a renewal to contract purchase order to scarce for an environmental education services for the Department of Building, Zoning and Planning for the period of December first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, for a contract total amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred per most qualified request for proposal number one-nine dash oh nine eight BZ. This is a renewal, uh, number two of three renewals.
Okay, there's been a motion, uh, and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Selman? Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia? Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? And Renahan? Okay, thank you, Member Rutledge. On to the order of Health and Human Services. Member Renahan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just by the way, a quick update. Uh, we heard this, uh, I heard from Mary Keating this morning, the rental assistance program that was supposed to open on Monday through IDA has been delayed. The portal, for those of you who have had questions on that, um, so look for that in December. Um, and I will move authorization for overnight travel for our community services director to go to DeKalb, Georgia for a NACO meeting, December first through December fourth, twenty-twenty-one, one thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Selman? Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? And Pachowski? Okay, the resolution is adopted. Member Renahan?
Uh, thank you. I move a rule of HHSP four one three twenty-one, a contract purchase order to pulmonary exchange, uh, LTD, DVP, LVIP medical staffing to run respiratory care equipment for the care center, November twenty, twenty-twenty-one through November nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, not to exceed thirty-five thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
So moving on to judicial and public safety, um, no committee update. Uh, move approval of JPSP four oh five twenty-one, professional services agreement with Cost of Miller for provided consultation services for collective bargaining for the probation department contract with ASME, December first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-two, twenty-two, not to exceed fifty thousand.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? No? Oh, forgive me. Um, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Selman? Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? And Pachowski? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan?
All right, thank you. I move approval of JPSP four oh six twenty-one, a contract purchase order to Illinois Communications Sales for BDA Systems to enhance Starcon system for the Sheriff's Office, not to exceed thirty-six thousand five hundred.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP four oh seven twenty-one, contract purchase order to Krista Withers and Mullen Withers in Cerny to provide professional services as a conflict attorney for juvenile cases, uh, December first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, for the court, not to exceed forty-two thousand.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP four oh eight twenty-one, contract purchase order to Concisus Corporation to provide professional consultation and tech assistance and capification systems for the Circuit Court Clerk, December first, twenty-twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, six point six million.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
All right, thank you. I move approval of JPSP four oh nine twenty-one, recommendation approval for, uh, to purchase business IT sources, computer equipment for the Circuit Court Clerk system, uh, contract of two hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan.
Thank you.
On to the order of Legislative. Member Desart?
Thank you, Chairman. Just by way of a committee update, a quick federal legislative update, late Friday, House lawmakers adopted a roughly one-point-two trillion-dollar measure to approve the county's roads, bridges, pipes, ports, and internet connections. The bipartisan vote marked the, uh, final milestone for the first of two pieces of the President's economic agenda. At our next legislative committee meeting in two weeks, which is on November twenty-third, we hope to have our federal lobbyist, Bill Viney, as a guest to tell us specific opportunities for counties under the infrastructure bill, and you all are invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Uh, on to the order of Public Works. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to thank Angela Ben, Ben Donelli and, um, Sean Reese and Jay Dahlberg. I visited the Nordic Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project yesterday in Itasca, and the project is coming along just really well and on time and on budget, four of my favorite words, and it was also a beautiful day. So I think Jay and Sean were happy to get out of the office. So, uh, and thank you again, Angela, for arranging that. To bring you an update on the project, it's a ten-million-dollar project. The facility was first built in nineteen fifty-six and was updated in nineteen eighty-five. Uh, so we will end up with a new state-of-the-art facility, and we'll be serving thirty-six-hundred residents over the next fifty, for the, probably the next fifty years. So, good project, going well. Uh, I'd like to move for approval of FMP zero four one two twenty-one, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Allied Universal Technology Services for security system maintenance and repair services as needed for facilities management for a two-year period, November tenth, twenty-twenty-one through November ninth, twenty-twenty-three, total contract amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars, lowest responsible bid.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog?
Yes.
Pachowski? Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Selman? Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay? Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski?
Aye.
And LaPlante? Very nice. Thank you. The resolution is adopted. Uh, Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMC oh zero five oh eight twenty-one, amendment to resolution PWP zero one six nine nineteen, issued to Hampton, Lonzini, and Renwick Incorporated for on-call professional engineering services, to increase the contract in the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for services related to the water main loop connection to project design and for various projects for facilities management, taking the original contract amount of ninety thousand dollars and resulting in a new contract total not to exceed a hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, an increase of fifty-nine point one seven percent.
Leave is, leave is granted. Member Ozog?
Thank you. Um, I move for approval of PWR zero five zero six twenty-one, resolution authorizing the county superintendent of public works to sign Illinois Environmental Protection Agency loan documents.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP zero four one, one zero twenty-one, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Curry Motorsfleet, Motorsfleet for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-two Ford F-250 four-by-two pickup truck for public works for a total contract amount not to exceed forty-five thousand sixteen dollars, pricing in compliance with Government Joint Purchasing Act.
Leave is granted. Uh, Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I move for approval of PWP zero four eleven twenty-one, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Trans Chicago Truck Group for the purchase of a used twenty-nineteen Freightliner one twenty-two SD with eighty-four hundred miles per attached quote for public works for the period November ninth, twenty-twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, for a contract total amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Competitive bids not suitable for competitive bid used equipment.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog. On to the order of Stormwater. Member Jim Zay?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. For committee update, a few items, uh, today. On item C that, uh, grant we received was, uh, from former board member and State Representative Amy Grant, the two-hundred thousand dollars that'll be used, uh, along Winfield Creek for, uh, buyouts in a village at Winfield. Then item G, this is an item, a Comcast service agreement. This is something that, uh, I know has come up in the past. Stormwater's been dealing with this since twenty fifteen. This is when we do these, uh, agreements with Comcast or AT&amp;T. They put these extra fees on there. That's not part of the contract. Uh, this was negotiated by our staff in the State's Attorney's Office, and that I know we're all looking at that for in the future, uh, getting that taken care of, so that we're not surprised by additional fees on those, on those contracts. So with that, I move on SMR four ninety-nine twenty-one, recommendation approval of modification three of inner department memorandum of understanding for HUD funding for Redmond Reservoir.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert? Desart? De Ciani? Eckoff? Garcia?
Aye.
Hart? Krajewski? LaPlante? Ozog? Pachowski? Renahan? Rutledge?
Aye.
Schworzy? Selman? And Tornatori?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR five hundred twenty-one, recommendation approval of modification three of the inner department memorandum of understanding for HUD funding for the Warrenville West Branch DuPage River Improvement Project.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR four ninety-eight twenty-one, acceptance Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 498-21, acceptance appropriation Illinois Department of Commerce Economic Opportunity Grant, the amount of $200,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 402-21, approval of contract issued to Seaborough Group for on-call professional engineering services, the amount not to exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 403-21, uh, recommendation into joint funding agreement between the county of DuPage and the USGS for water resource investigations, amount of $372,900.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP 404-21, contract issued to Zionon Water Solutions for pump repairs as needed, the amount of $65,093.63.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on change order, revision to Comcast service agreement to remove approximately $92,000 unapproved freeze and taxes charged to Stormwater Management.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. A fine report. On to the order of technology. Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 419-21, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to MHC Software for annual maintenance for our ERP system. This contract covers a period from December 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2022, for a total amount of $57,130.20. This is sole source.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. And Schwartzy. Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 417-21, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Carisoff Technology Corporation for the annual support and hosting of our Agenda in Minutes Meeting Management System, this is from December 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2022, a total of $41,696.61, bought via the Governmental Joint Purchasing Act.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 416-21, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for our GIS program. This contract is from November 15th, 2021 through November 30th, 2022, for a total cost of $125,400, also via the Governmental Joint Purchasing Act.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 415-21, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Imaging Systems, doing business as Integrated Document Technologies. Uh, this is for a contract of covering December, sorry, January 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2023, for a total of $51,818.51, and this is sole source.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 414-21, a recommendation of, for the approval of a contract purchase order to SHI International Corp. This is our Adobe Systems software for DuPage County and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. Total, or, contracts from November 10th, 2021 through November 9th, 2022, a total amount of $204,856.46.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 398-21, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to BDO USA Solutions Provider LLC. It's our annual software maintenance for FireEye Security from December 10th, 2021 through December 9th, 2022, for $152,487. This is a renewal.
Leave is granted. Thank you. Member Selman.
Next up, I may, I move on TEP 418-21, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to AT&amp;T Mobility. This is from December 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2024, for a total of $167,950.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Selman. A fine report. Um, on to the order of transportation. Uh, in, uh, Member Pachowski's place, we have Member Ozog. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of DTR 0507-21, resolution additional appropriation for the Impact Fee Service Area Five Fund, Company 1500, accounting unit 3645, $555,000.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Chowsky, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy, Selman, Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. And LaPlante. Thank you. Member Ozog.
I move for approval of DTP 0399-21, recommendation for the approval of a contract to HBK Engineering LLC to provide professional surveying and underground locating and marking services, section 21 PULMS 03MS for a contract total not to exceed $400,000, professional services, architects, engineers, and land surveyors vetted through qualification-based selection process and compliance with Illinois Local Government Professional Services Act.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of DTP 0421, recommendation for the approval of a contract with Hampton, Lonzini, and Renwick Incorporated for construction engineering services for the central signal system expansion, expansion number three, section 19, DCCSSO3TL, contract total not to exceed $741,407.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move for an amendment to resolution DTR 0428-21, RW Dunham for the Downers Grove Township 2021 Resurfacing Program, section 21, 03001GM, for an accounting adjustment.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog.
I move for amendment to resolution DTR 0314-21, RW Dunham for the Milton Township 2021 Road Maintenance Program, section 21, 05001GM, for an accounting adjustment.
Leave is granted.
Okay, and I finally move for an amendment to resolution DTR 0337-C20, awarded to Martin Construction for CH20 Grand Avenue over Addison Creek Culvert Replacement, section 19, 0027204DR, due to a Strybner's error.
Leave is granted. Thank you. A fine report. Uh, our next order of business is entitled Old Business, Old Business. Uh, Member Garcia.
Yeah, hi. Just, uh, we talked about this at finance, but I wanted to bring this up at the county board. Um, due to our, because of the, uh, Build Back Better Plan, which was done in the, uh, federal government, I want to really start getting the counties to start looking at, uh, being strong and being the change and like getting electric vehicle chargers. I know Nick Kotmeyer, uh, informed, uh, the board this morning that that's what they're going to be doing is trying to buy hybrid, uh, uh, vehicles. Uh, the state is now doing the REV Act, which is reimagining electric vehicles, which basically they're trying to get, uh, factories here in the state of Illinois. So I think that we should start doing it also on the campus and then also starting to look at where we can be in the county in terms of getting these electric vehicle chargers, because this is going to be the future, at least it should be. So, thank you.
Yeah. We've been pretty much leaders when it comes to a lot of the environmental, uh, policies, you know, going back to cool counties. And so I wouldn't say it's fair to say that we start, would we begin doing this? We've been doing it, um, and I think with the resources.
I'm not trying to say we're starting it, but I think this is what we need to.
Your choice of words was, we could start, we could begin. We've been working on that. Now with this resource, we, we can apply for grants and we can try to pursue, uh, support for those vehicles. But no, I agree. Uh, we're on that, we're on the job and we will continue and to aggressively pursue opportunities to get to a more environmentally friendly fleet of vehicles. So, thank you. Anyone else on the order of old business? Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday in the Chicago Tribune, um, I read an article called "The Big Lie Roadshow Continues With A New Stop In The Chicago Suburbs." A few quotes from the editorial, "The Big Lie Has Made Its Way To DuPage County. An organization called Breakthrough Ideas Claims Voter Fraud Tainted The Results Of The November 2020 Election In Suburban DuPage County." The harm, and I'm paraphrasing from the article, or I'm quoting parts of it, "The harm the Big Lie believers, the hu, the harm Big Lie believers are inflicting on the country and on democracy itself runs far deeper than perpetuating the myth that the former president was robbed of four more years. On the horizon are midterm elections as well as a bevy of state and local elections, and another presidential contest in 2024. Americans of all political opinions need to trust in those elections, that they will be allowed to vote unhindered and that their vote will be counted fairly in a system that follows the rule of law and not the rule of the mob. Today, I want to thank everyone in, on our staff who worked on the recent voting machine proposal, including our finance department, our procurement department, the state's attorney's office, and Clerk Jean Kazmerick's office. And I want to thank the boy, board for our unanimous vote two weeks ago. This was really a vote for democracy. Thank you."
Um, anyone else on the order of old business? Member Renahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm sorry if I've been beating you to the punch on, on this one. I just wanted to recognize Murray Snow for his service, um, at the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management as the director. Um, this is his last county board meeting, so just want to recognize all the great work he's done and especially in the aftermath of the Father's Day tornado that affected so much of District 3, and I wish him well, um, in the private sector, and I think a round of applause is in order.
Yes, I agree.
Thanks, Murray.
Yes, no, I, I echo those remarks, and yes, I did have some remarks prepared as we were going to close our meeting. But, uh, yeah, why don't we just say that Murray, we've been through a few, uh, episodes and some thick and thin stressful events, and, uh, you've always performed valiantly, and I thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best in your, the next chapter of your life. So, thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else on the order of old business? Old business. Anyone, so move on to the next order of business entitled New Business, looking forward. Uh, Liz, such a forward thinking. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So, uh, I just want to, staff will confirm this. I don't drink water, but when I do, it's tap water. And I just wanted to thank you for your comments about the bottled water here.
Oh, yeah.
I was at a, um, seminar, a luncheon on Friday. A Northern Illinois University put on a great program about, um, the mistrust in government and, and the rise of bottled water. So it really showed how people, um, are turning to bottled water because they don't trust that the government's water is safe or is, uh, good for them.
Crazy.
It is, it is. I agree. So, um, and this might be a little premature. I was talking with Nick about this, uh, Friday afternoon, because I was really excited when I got home from this, um, luncheon. Um, but you know, maybe we could, and, and I would really like to see once our sinks are back on, that the, um, getting rid of this and having our pitchers with the glasses back here. Um, but you know, DuPage County could do a great service by putting out a public service announcement to our, uh, community to say, hey, look at, we have some of the best water here in the world. And, you know, you're spending a lot of money on bottled water that you don't really need to be doing. It's much healthier, your tap water, because a lot of the nutrients are taken out of the bottled water. And Sheila Rutledge, it's great for the environment. So I was hoping, Nick and I had talked about possibly having a working group with the Water Commission, the Environmental Committee, and the Health Department. And you know, now you just were so passionate about getting rid of your bottled waters, maybe you would like to like join in on this endeavor and really try, your last, wait, just your last, uh, your last public service announcement, or, you know, it'd be a really great thing, I think, that we could all work on together.
Yes, yes.
But yes, so yes, it is something I wanted to mention. When you talk water, you're talking my world tears.
I can always leave my swill bottle. I've lost so many of them. They're like expensive, you know, and I forget where I leave them. But I do like to have, well, you'd need to drink more water. Hydrating is very important.
I agree. I do.
Good for your skin.
It is. I, I know, but I just don't like it.
Good for your joints, your bones.
I know.
Good for your digestive system. Very good, all the way around.
I understand, I understand.
Yes. Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind everybody, um, it is Veterans Day, this Thursday, and, um, you know, wanted to, wanted to, uh, thank all our veterans for, um, working so hard for our freedoms in this country. So I just want to say Happy Veterans Day and, uh, to all our veterans, and that's it.
Yes. Um, Armistice Day, right? The 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month when World War I came to an end. Now, it's evolved into a change to Veterans Day, but you're right, it's got a rich history. Well, kind of a renewed interest in World War I these days. It was really such a brutal war. Supposed to be the war to end all wars, right? But, uh, but, uh, yeah, thank you for those remarks. Um, yes, we, uh, have a huge amount of respect for our veterans. We have a fabulous, um, uh, display, uh, devoted to our veterans right here on our campus. So yes, I urge everyone to go out and pay their respects and thank a veteran, because we wouldn't be free and we wouldn't enjoy, um, DuPage County without them. So with that, uh, Member Ozog, on the order of new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to, uh, piggyback on Member Covert's remarks, my son is a Navy veteran and currently Navy Reserve, and he has promised me that he's going to attend the Glen Allen Service at Lake Ellen, or the memorial on, uh, Thursday at 11:00 AM. So if I say it in public, now he will have to come with me. So, I'll, I'll be telling him to watch the video. Thank you.
That's nice. Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, Member Chaplin, I'd love to do that. I don't think people realize the DuPage Water Commission is the second largest water utility in the state of Illinois. We pump on an average of 75 million gallons of water a day to about a million people. So if we pump more water and get rid of these bottled water, of course, that doesn't look good. You know, I've always pushed us having the pitchers of water, but we can't right now. But again, yes, uh, the water is good. It's healthier than the bottled water.
I'm protesting. I'm not drinking from this, uh, Member Garcia. I'm just, I'm just going to leave it there for the, for the next chairman. They can drink out of it if they want.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I want to say, you know, we always kind of get, kind of, go at each other. You know, we have a talented photographer here, you know, Sheila Rutledge. If you go to her, Captured By Sheila Page, she actually, thank God, my son takes after his mother, she did some nice senior pictures for my son, because. On your Facebook page? Yeah. So because of COVID, the high schools weren't doing senior pictures anymore. They were just doing headshots and that's it. So she was nice enough to, uh, take Tyler out and do some really nice pictures. So, thank you.
Very nice.
And she's going to do my campaign pictures, too.
Member DeCiani, followed by Member Eckhoff.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, the fact that you, in our prayer, we mentioned that Bensonville Police Officer, we all pray for, and his family. Um, also want to thank, uh, the officers that backed him up, responding officers from Elmhurst, Addison, and Wooddale came to his, his, um, saving, and, uh, it was a very difficult situation, uh, there, there in our, in our county. Um, on, on the note of public safety, I brought up, I know you weren't here, but the, we, we talked about ARPA money, and, uh, we've got the 211 that we're pushing, which is great, and I think it's important. Um, I brought up the fact of the issue of wandering and how important that is as well, and if we can possibly incorporate that into our 211 and/or, uh, possibly incorporate into this budget, uh, I think that would be helpful. We often have, uh, young children that are cognitively impaired, autism, uh, Down Syndrome, seniors with Alzheimer's and dementia, and, uh, it, it's a big issue. And now that we're down to two piece apps, we've got laws on the books that allows us to, uh, really track people well, and, um, I'm hoping we can incorporate some of that, uh, in either the 211, uh, and/or, uh, this next year's budget. So, uh, I'll be, be bringing those forward to, uh, to help these seniors and, and the kids that have these cognitive impairments that often wander. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Further discussion, Mr. Eckhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up on the good news that you talked about during your comments, that we've got vaccination rates in DuPage County up over 80%. Uh, back in, around Labor Day, I sent a note to Karen Ayala saying that, hey, cases look like they're going down. Maybe we can get rid of this mask mandate. And she said, no, you got to take a look at how hospital, uh, rates and death, the death rate, uh, are adjusted over time. And I got some more information from the Health Department yesterday to compare when the governor took off the mask mandate on May 18th, 2021, and what they are today. And our numbers for hospitalization and the death rate are actually better than they were on May 18th, 2021. Hospital, new admissions were three, now they're one. The rolling average was 4.7, now it's two. The death rates, and again, if I'm reading this wrong, I always say, Health Department, please correct me, but was one, but I don't think we've had a death in DuPage County in November from our stats. So I would, again, urge the governor to follow the science and to divide, uh, the DuPage County and the metro Chicago area up into a different part, like we had different parts of the state earlier on in the year, and eliminate the mask mandate. And if he's not going to follow the science, then I suggest that he tell us what rules he is following, so at least we can understand what those are and they have a debate about those.
Okay, thank you, Member, uh, Eckhoff. Further discussion on the order of new business? New business? Um, seeing none, hearing none. Um, Member Selman, were you seeking, um, to organize into executive session? Yeah. So, so, yeah, we do have, uh, some issues to discuss, um, regarding, uh, pursuant to open meetings, Act 5, ILCS 120/2C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. We want to talk a little bit about that subject matter in executive session. So, uh, there's been a motion and a second by Member DeCiani to organize in executive session. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schwartzy. Okay, uh, if you need to go take a quick break, please return. Um, don't get drawn into the gathering room because there's some tasty donuts. Uh, we go back to our agenda. We've grizzled out of executive session. Uh, I believe that, uh, we would now entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021 at 10:00 AM. All those in favor, say aye. Close, now the eyes have it, meeting adjourned. Thank you.